It's your local government at work. Live from City Hall in downtown Warren, this is the Warren City Council Meeting on SalineRiverChronicle.com.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
BCEDC. Please call the board.
I'm Alfred.
President.
I'm Fulleton.
Here.
I'm Ray.
Here.
I'm Nelson.
Here.
I'm Henderson.
Here.
Here. Note that all are present. Item four, approval of the minutes. Y'all have them?
I know that we approved the minutes for September 10th, 2012.
We have a motion by Henderson, second by Fulleton to approve the minutes. Any discussion here, none. All in favor, raise your hand. I say six, four, none against. Minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, you've recognized the financial statement.
Okay. The balance in general for September 30th was $302,654.79. Year-to-date revenues, $1,811,822.31. The expenditures by the department are as follows. Administrative, $181,223.60. Law enforcement, $751,863.30. Fire, $174,988.59. Sanitation, $4,8651.53. Building codes, $34,212.70. District court, $56,597.56. Municipal building, $21,059.04. Recreation, $120,379.45. Comfort center, $32,686.2. Neighborhood center, $7,188.38. And other was $95,433.40. And the total expenditures for the year, $1,883,570.71. And thus an increase of $28,251.60. Balance in the street fund on September 30th was $167,360.99. Year-to-date revenue, $389,823.70. Year-to-date expenditures, $435,090.20. And thus a decrease for the year of $45,266.47. The balance in the other accounts on September 30th is $1,888,354.71. Year-to-date revenue, $2,773,313.40. And expenditures was $3,256,283.70. And thus a decrease for the year of $477,315.30. You should also have a copy of the city treasurer's report. Any questions?
Any motion for approval of the financial statement?
A motion that we approve the financial statement as president. Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the financial statement. Any discussion? Here, none. All in favor, raise your hand. Six, four, none against. Madam Clerk, you recognize.
Okay. The city sales and use tax, we received $65,112.40 in September. The revenue that totaled is $565,290.24. And we're down about $3,400 from the same grade last year. County sales and use, we received $44,560.34. Year-to-date total, $381,385.70. And we're down about $182. You should have a copy of the district court clerk's report and also the overtime report for the third quarter.
Haven't anybody calling you? All right, under Mayor's report, you have the B's. I call it a mispronunciation, B-C-E-D-C report. You have his monthly report in front of you. And Alderman, court's been recognized.
There's no meeting.
I would like to make the council aware.
All right, sure. There you go.
One item. Most of you are aware of the Drug Take-Back Program, which is a nationwide program that started here about four years ago. And what this is for is to allow people to turn in unwanted, unneeded or unused prescriptions to police agencies. We have participated all four times with this program. And this lasts, the 25th of September, we offered the drive-through from the police department where people don't even have to get out of the cars, which is a convenience for them. But also, we offered a pickup if a person had some at home and was not able to deliver them to the police department. We provided that service. And we were able to collect forty pounds of pills. Now, most of you, think about it just a minute, that's a lot of pills. But Arkansas has the highest misuse rate of prescription medications of any state in the nation. And it's something that we are working on, trying to do everything we can, along with every other police agency in the state of Arkansas. But I just want you to know that that's something we are working, working on. Each of us have a killer in our homes, and that killer is our medicine cabinets. It has, if you just stop and think, it has a lot of prescription medications that's been in there forever. And thank those of you who have family members who not only go into the restroom, but also you have neighbors' kids or children that come in. I'm not trying to be funny here, I'm serious. All they have to do is open that to find, find one thing, whether it be an aspirin or whatever, and they find a prescription medication there that they know is a sedative, and that's what most of them are using. So, it's something we all need to be very mindful of.
What about over the counter? What about over the counter things? Do you pick up things too?
The county also picked up some, and I didn't know how much they got, Ms. Ford.
No, I say, how about over the counter?
Over the counter, that's the thing about, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. And that's the thing about this, you can turn in anything that you want to turn in. There's no questions asked. It does not have to have your name on the prescription, on the bottle, or anything else. Anything that will...
And it's an excellent program, and it's done nationwide.
Kurt Bradbury had a very powerful item television, on his son.
It's a, it's a big problem.
What do you think, what is the status on your personal protective equipment? I'm sorry, sir. What is the status on your personal protective equipment?
We have had a, had a problem on our vests. We have contacted the agency, Little Rock Cruise Uniforms, who has supposed to come down here twice and measure our people for, for the vests. The first time, and I talked to the owner, Steve Cruz, this last week, the individual who does his measuring is very good, but the first time, instead of going to Warren, he went to Ward. And we're sitting there waiting on him, and there was a little mix up there. He had a conflict, a scheduling conflict last Tuesday, so I told Steve to set up a date that he can come down to measure all of us, and we will just have everybody come in to get that done.
That's the only company you have?
I'm sorry.
That's the only company you have?
That is the company, that's the best company in the state to deal with. They're some way up in North Arkansas, but whenever you get a vest in, you have a problem, you have to send these officers back up there to be resized or anything. This is a company that sells all the state police, Yang and Fish, and is the biggest uniform company in the state.
Okay.
But we do have a grant that the Arkansas Chief of Police Association and what they call the vest share grant to the federal government. Those two agencies, once these vests are paid for, will turn around and reimburse the city 100%.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You have the fire report in front of you, and we have advertised for bids on the fire rescue truck. And we will get those bids in for the city council to purview and go for them. Under Marty, you got anything on the fire committee?
Nothing.
Sanitation manager Mike May, and turning his hat around, building code. Sanitation first, I guess. You might want to tell them what we're facing, if you would, with the, with the transfer station, with what we're faced with with ADQ. And if you would, inform them about the container, 40-yard containers that you think we'll need in next year's budget.
ADQ has revamped their water section regulations.
I just want to bring to this attention, let's skip the fire chief report.
No, David, I said you have your fire chief's report in your hand.
Okay, the chief?
Yes, not here.
Oh, I had a question, but, okay.
You can hold it till after the meeting.
All right, there you go ahead.
They revamped their water, and they're getting a lot stricter on it. The transfer station currently has a septic system out there that deals with all of our water runoff. We've got four large storm drains out there that we wash our trucks and utilize that drain system. Well, that is no longer going to be an option for us. They, they won't allow us to have a septic system at all. We're going to have to capture our water runoff. Any, any water that touches garbage is going to have to be captured and pumped out. So, we're going to have to, one of the recommendations by the engineers is going to be to cap the field lines off, utilize a thousand gallon septic tank that we have now, and have a company come and pump it as necessary to keep it clear. So, that's going to be an added expense on us next year, possibly $4,500, low end, or maybe a little more than that, that we're going to have to incur. And that's something we're going to have to do within the next couple of months, probably. We are in desperate need of additional boxes. We've got a new company, WCA Waste Corp. out of Arkansas that's hauling our trash for us now.
What's the name of it?
Waste Corp. of Arkansas. They're hauling our trash now in lieu of Delta Environmental, which filed for bankruptcy and went out of business a few months ago. Their method of hauling is a little bit different than, than the old company. The old company used to get one of our boxes, one of Bradley County's boxes, and then they service us every day. Waste Corp. services as needed, and they come and get two boxes. So, we are shorthanded on turnaround two or three times a week, just about. So, in order to alleviate that problem, recommend to the mayor that we buy two additional 40-yard containers. We bought two at the end of last year and then two at the beginning of this year for four new boxes, and this will give us six new operating boxes. Waste Corp. also, we have some green boxes, 40-yard container boxes, that we were using with Delta that are in pretty bad shape. And according to Waste Corp., they're not usable anymore. They're, they're not safe to haul across over the road, so we had to take those out of service. And we're going to require probably $14,000 worth of boxes starting first next year. So, that's going to be close to $20,000 worth of added expense on us around first next year.
Albinson, this time.
Building code official. He turned his hat around. Any questions for the building code officials? All right, thank you, sir. Let's back up and let Howard Edwards come up here.
And your fire board was great.
Thank you. Most of that was delay payments from Martin Gollings, who must have...
Howard, I told them they had their report. Would you like to copy it in front of you, in case they have any questions? Alderman Henderson is recognized.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions in your report. On the second page, burning without a permit, the last item that was listed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, did you give them like a?
Got a warning.
Okay, so, and then when you go on over to the third page, all of these individuals are just getting warnings?
Well, so far, there's been just, there was no tickets written. I mean, it's just warnings.
Even when the fire gets out of control?
They weren't out of control, they were just, well, I don't have my glasses, I can't even see that. But if they're out of control, we, you know, shut them down, put them out, and stuff like that.
But they, they just automatically just get a warning?
No, sometimes it gives a ticket.
Is it your discretion, Chief, whether they do it?
Yeah, the operator's out on the call, yeah. It's not always, I'm not always there. If the driver operator is having it.
But the last one, wasn't it out of control?
That's what it says. I'm having a hard time seeing it. I don't have my glasses with me.
Okay, well, that was my, that was my...
Yeah. Out of control can mean minor or big, you know, just, just handling another property and stuff like that. And aren't they damage of the property, they come here getting a ticket, just in their own domain, and it's just spreading, you know?
It looks like the number of permits are down to 49 for the entire year compared to previous.
We're running close to 3,000 permits in town. It's like 27, 26.
Okay, this says burning permits, there were 12 permits issued in December for a total of 49 for the year.
That's just for the year. I'm talking about...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's down for this year. Yeah. Okay, that's all I had there.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, I didn't have my glasses. Keep up if they're there. Street foreman, Tommy Adams.
We got our sweeper out doing good bit. Westside, Walnut, Bond, Moon, no, we seen the street, no, we're not here in all. We've got our bush hogging called up. We'll probably do one more bush hogging before the weather killed it all. We stay hidden.
What about Alexander Street? Is there a street bump that was put in, or just a?
No, that's a, that's a straight cut that we're going to have to fix when it gets out. Water department cut the thing all the way across and lay the water line. And we will fix it. It just, you don't want to fix them too quick. If you do, it'll fall right back in. But if you get traffic compacted out real good, then we'll go there, pour concrete, and be able with it. That's something we're going to probably do this next week.
I mean, I want to thank you for the, for the bush hogging down there, Moon and Cedar.
They're being reckless.
Well, it was a bit, exactly, it's an inside fence. I wouldn't want to go in there right now.
No, we didn't go inside.
No, I know you didn't. You did now, you did outside. But you knocked it from inside down, we see the outside of the fence now. I appreciate you man running by there doing that. Under street committee, we had put the log truck issue in the street committee, and I had called Crossit and gotten a copy of their ordinance, and called Hamburg and got a copy of their ordinance, and Monticello does not have an ordinance. And we probably need to get another couple of small towns similar size to Warren and forward that on to Alderman Burks. Then we will have to take a pretty hard look at it and see. And we'll be sure Alderman Burks knew about what was pursuing, trying to get him some information. And Alderman Burks is recognized at this...
Well, that's all I, I just wanted to make sure that we try to get all the information with off the camp and come up with something, something that's going to be reasonable force. But, you know, I still just have a concern, even though there's a lot of folks that are working in their yards, but again, it's going to take down, you know, some of your areas. We will take away, if you see a log truck or something parked in a residential area that is, that's been at night, at one time nice, and now you see a log truck parked. So, I mean, that's what we want, that's what we want to do. But I just think that goes along with intellect.
Well, I read the Crossit ordinance, and I'll get copies to everybody before we do it. They have, I talked to Scott McCormick, the mayor, and he said they do not, they just have a little, they have certain routes, period, that log trucks are allowed unloaded or unloaded. They're not allowed in their neighborhoods. Hamburg has a little different approach. Monticello, I thought, from my understanding, had a, you know, had a real strict rule on it, but they have the same issue we're having of folks beginning to work on in neighborhoods. And they, as you're aware, they have no zoning laws, and they do not have an ordinance on concerning log trucks.
You know, you know, you get in there, you spend the meager amount of money we have trying to fix a street, and then here comes a big truck over, and it's not going to last for too much. So, it's all a thing.
Anything else, Alderman?
No, I'm done.
All right, thank you, Tom. I'll finish next, and I'll make the development, Alderman, talk to...
Yes, sir. I have a couple of issues, and they are all ballot issues. And sometimes we sit on around the table and discuss items such as the streets and revenues and things like this, and you have this to come down to general assembly. And oh too many times, at least in my ward, I come to find out that people are very under-informed about ballot issue items. And so, I gave each one of my constituents a copy of each one, so you can just get the nuts and bolts out of each issue, because sometimes all the small print counter distortion discourages you from reading on. And I think two of these issues, one and two, generally, they say are going to affect our cities. Mayor, you have any input on the one with the streets or highway test?
Well, one, that I've read, the Highway Amendment one.
Yeah, that's the one.
My interpretation of that, just based on the for side, is that the city will get an extra $100,000 a year to operate on the streets. The against side is, of course, against it because it's an increase in the sales tax. And I haven't read the whole bill yet, but as I understand it, there's some language in there that allows the highway department to elect, or highway commissioners will be appointed at large, is my understanding, but I'm not sure.
That is correct. In fact, I shared that information at the last meeting from the executive board.
And that will kind of change the dynamics, in my view, of the highway commission, because all of a sudden, if you get a Republican governor, and I'm not against Republicans, let's say if you get a governor that's from Fayetteville, and he stays there eight years, and all of a sudden, four years in a row, you have four highway commissioners from Fayetteville. But if we happen to get one elected from Warren, we might have four highway commissioners from Warren, but that is not going to happen. So, I think that's something that needs to be discussed. The other one dealt with the bonding issue, and from my understanding, it has no negative effect on the cities. It allows cities a method to finance certain projects. From my understanding, it's not very many people protesting that amendment, but it's real complicated and concerns a lot of financial moves with the bond and how to do, that you can, the city will be allowed to do a project and then dedicate sales tax to pay for that project, like a street improvement or whatever, and issue a certain bond for it. And then you will pay the bonds off with, that's my understanding of it. And to be honest with you, I haven't read that whole bill yet. I hadn't, I hadn't read that one yet, that amendment, Joe, so that's all the comment I'm going to give you, otherwise I would really show my ignorance.
Oh, no, I'm just, it just caught my eye, because depreciation, property, slum areas, and businesses closing, it seemed like it gives you another avenue as a municipality to, to address those issues.
That's correct, from my understanding, from what it... But a lot of fine print in both those bills, sir.
Oh, yeah. That's why I like to get the dummy.
I wanted to suck it up and read them all.
Why, that's why I always get the dummy version.
Well, John Gannon has copies, I think, for the extension service. And he will, he said he would provide. Anything else, sir?
That's it? That's what my full, that's my...
And also, number one, all of the authority to allocate highway funds will be directed toward the population center.
Average.
Which lets us out.
And on that, on the issue of number one, it has a map on the third page that shows you the Fayetteville area, Little Rock area, populated areas. I don't think one of them touches the Bradley County area or any area other than El Dorado.
I don't know where, so, sorry.
Yeah. So... Thank you.
I don't think you find any disagreement in your opinion, sir. Ways and Means, Alderman Henderson.
We do have business. We have three items listed. The first one is the agreement with CBAC, and each of you should have a handout. And in a nutshell, the agreement is a collaboration with the CBAC students to build a building to go on the actual shooting range. And if you'll look at A in the agreement, which is a memorandum of understanding, because the action that we would be doing would be purchasing the material, there would not be a stipend or a salary for the students. But if you'll look at A, it states that CBAC using confertery students will construct a 30-by-60 building, and they will actually be doing this on their school property where they have been building the houses before, where you see where the platforms are there for them to start on another project. The building will have one large room with three restrooms, one of which will be handicap accessible, a large room with windows on both sides running the length of the room. The roof will be metal, and the committee discussed possible colors, and the exterior walls will be made of split logs. And the committee voted that the city go into agreement with CBAC for this amendment, and I move to that effect.
You have a motion, and that was a committee motion, requires no second. So, it's up for discussion or questions? Just moving the project along.
And CBAC has already agreed to it.
CBAC has agreed to this. And signed the agreement, actually. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? All those in favor of the motion by the committee, is presented by the committee, raise your hand. I see six, four, nine against. Madam Chairman, you're recognized.
And just a little bit more information related to the shooting range. We did ask the projected timeframe, and according to the mayor, we're looking at somewhere around a year, give or take days there. The second item listed on the agenda is the rate change for the street department. At the present time, the street foreman is an hourly employee at fourteen dollars and twenty-three cent an hour, and per our personnel policy, we're trying to get everything to more or less line up with what we're doing with what is in our new policy, and it is the recommendation of this committee that the street foreman go from an hourly to a salary employee, going from fourteen dollars and twenty-three cent an hour to three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cent per month. And I move that we move forward with the change of the street foreman's income.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here, nine dollars in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, nine against. Madam Chairman.
And then the second item that relates employees' wages is the equipment operators, and we do have three of those. In order for us to have the salaries in line with the personnel policy, that new personnel policy that we passed, we're asking that we move the equipment operators from five C to six B, and I move that...
Second.
Their salary be five, go from five C to six E.
Any discussion? Here, nine dollars in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, nine against. Madam Chairman.
And then the third item listed is the 2013 budget. As you know, that we are in the budgeting process. We did receive information relating the upcoming budgeting process, and we will be scheduling meetings, and we invite anyone to come to those meetings. We're trying to get our schedules together so that we can probably have three, possibly four meetings, so that we'll be prepared. As you know, dollars are really, really tight. The budget is going to be tight, and we will be looking at requests, and hopefully, you know, the salaries of the employees, we're hoping that they will be able to receive something, but looking at the revenue, things are very, very tight. And then lastly, it was brought to our attention that we do have the quarterly overtime pay schedule. Thank you so much, Jenny, for that. If you would look at the first page, it gives you the overtime for the second quarter for 2011, and it brings us up to the second quarter of 2012. Right now, the total overtime is down. We are at twenty-seven thousand, two hundred, thirty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cent, compared to last year this time, it was thirty-four thousand, seven hundred, seventy-seven dollars and seventy cents. And if you'll turn to the second page of that overtime sheet, it breaks it down by departments and by individuals. And it goes from 2012 on over to each of the quarters, up to quarter three, and then we'll look at the, the last quarter. And that is my report.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Nine A is planning commission, there's no meeting. Nine B is aviation, there's been no meeting. However, the lounge at the airport was left in disarray by persons unknown. They went in and cranked the air conditioner down to fifty, formed a block of ice on it, and then it stopped running, and the ice all melted onto our nice hardwood, laminated, laminated hardwood floor, and ran the floor, and they left a trash basket full of all sorts of stuff. Anyway, we've got it all cleaned up, but we are investigating the mystery of who done it. So, we don't know yet. It does have a passcode.
Really?
Really. So that's what we're trying to find. There've been several groups out there working, so who knows? But anyway, we're trying to get to the bottom of it. And it wasn't a major deal, but it was certainly an irritation. The aviation project is on track, and you can go down there now and see how the federal government is spending FFA money. We've had one advance, Jenny, and I'll pay them an airport, or two, asking a question. Okay. I'm not, I can't, I can't tell you how much money they've asked for. How the hell is right your hand?
Two.
Two, okay. So they're progressing. They've cleaned up all the timber, and they're, were putting in the covert last I was down there. Water and Sewer Commission, you have the minutes, and the bounty, Parks and Rec, I don't see any here. Housing Authority, they got their minutes, and they did have an audit under Cultural Center report.
Question, Mayor, before you get off the housing authority.
Okay.
How many houses do we have lined up to build this year? Do you have an idea through that project?
These are the new ones on seven. They've got listed here under item seven, but item six, I think they had six houses. They're actually bid out and under construction. And item seven is the home program, and those are the homeowners that are, and most of that looks like rehab, or what they call reconstruction, Alderman Toper. I'm not sure what the difference is. I guess it reconstruction, building new? I guess so, the two new.
Yeah, build a new one, 'cause one on George Street, I know it's gonna be a new one.
Okay. But that's my, that was my understanding.
And what about the other areas up there we wanted to be working in, in Cleveland County, I believe you said? How is that going?
I don't know. I'll have to get Alderman, I mean, I took Alderman Henderson, I'll have to get Alderman Golly, I think we've been talking quite some time about the home project. Any public sta, oops, unfinished sign for ballplayers. Y'all laid that off on the mayor, not quite there yet. Do y'all want a metal reflective sign? That's kinda what I'm meaning to, Alderman Toper.
Ain't that what they got on Interstate?
Yeah. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a company located that does it, so we can proceed. Public statements?
I think we, this homecoming weekend over Monticello, and I think my fraternity group are having a little fellowship for some of the alumni, outstanding alumni from UAM, so get a chance to come by Hampton.
What is this supposed to say?
You remember the one over there? You, you'd like to come by?
I won't be in town.
When is this?
Saturday night.
What's that?
I have to be after games.
All right.
Over at Hampton.
You headed to house friends? Did we skip the cultural center?
I don't have anything. Do we have a report?
Yes.
Oops. You had the cultural center report, which I seem to have misplaced. I've got it. Sorry. Cultural Center report, it looks like we spent fourteen hundred and eleven dollars, and the school will pay, based on the formula, the school pays the entire amount. Under new business, under twelve new business, we have twelve A of property tax levy, that's a resolution, which we need to do every year at this time. It'll be resolution five, seven, two, resolution five, seven, two. The resolution requesting the Bradley County Quorum Court to levy a five mil tax on all taxable property in the city of Warren, Arkansas, be resolved by the city council of Warren, Arkansas, whereas it is determined that a five mil tax levy is necessary for proper financing and operation of city government of Warren, Arkansas, and now therefore be resolved that the Quorum Court be, and is hereby requested, to levy a five mil tax on all taxable property in the city of Warren for the use and benefit of City City adopted this ninth day of October, 2012. Need a motion to approve.
Some move.
Motion by Alderman Fulton, second, by Alderman Henderson, and discussion by Alderman Motte.
Is this just a repeat thing that's...
Have to do it every year, like the five mil. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Here, nine dollars in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, nine against. Under announcements, we have Arkansas municipal winter conference. If you need a room, you need to get a hold of Jenny, or Dorothy, get the secret rates, and that is January sixteenth through eighteenth. I would encourage you to attend this one, that's when the legislators will be there and get a chance to lobby for your city.
Oh.
Our ghosts.
You said, you said who?
I'm not, the facts. I said lobby for your city. I didn't say, I said see your legislators, I didn't say which one.
Okay.
I go in there. Need a motion to pay the bills.
I know that we pay the bills.
Motion and second to pay the bills, Alderman in favor, keeping cities running by paying the bills, raise your hand. Six, four, nine against. You see, the meeting's gonna be on Tuesday again, without complaint.
Gee, that kid on my soccer team. They losing without.
Veterans Day, July, holiday.
Oh, I'll be in there, I might go.
So now we need a motion to adjourn.
I know that we adjourn.
And second by...
Marty.
That's what I said, I might go to one.
I hear you.
You wanna, you wanna show where adjourn?